To approve the regular meeting minutes of September 6th, 2018 as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion on the minutes gentlemen? I made a few changes to them but.
There's red ones.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Going on to the signatures. Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment now. Start Leo. Chief? Jeff, anything for the public?
No.
Okay, Mike you're on the agenda next so I'm gonna close public comment. We'll go right to the agenda. Welcome back Mike.
Okay, Mike.
Okay. Well, the thing is, I did some research, got some prices.
Mike, I'll recuse myself of this section.
Fair enough, fair enough.
As a reference to Kelsey Road.
Okay.
Or not really Kelsey Road at that point.
Well, the thing is it's more, this is more, it's really not to do with the lawsuit as I understand. This is about fill material. So I have, Mike, I wanted, last week as we left, I wanted some input from you which way you wanted to go. And, but before you make a decision, I came up with two options. Option one was a cash settlement of sixty yards of fill material. I took out delivery price, but just material, for the materials removed from that area. I did that at four dollars and twenty-five cents a yard and I came out to a payment of two hundred and fifty-five dollars. That'd be option one. And that would be cut, check would be cut next week if we went that way out. Option two would be, we could take material probably a little bit better quality than what was taken out, but it's fill material, and it would be sixty yards to be delivered by the town to your property. And that time to be determined when you were available and the town was available with mutually agreed time upon it. And probably around, I'd say, two to four weeks from now. And so, I'm gonna put the ball in who your court, and those are my two options I came up with. And I'd like to know, where do you want to go with this? I put you on the spot, a little bit.
Well, not really, kind of, I guess.
Well, the thing is, I think last week, I'm glad we waited because some of the numbers we banded around last week was three dollars a yard, and the thing is, we could not get it for three dollars a yard. And so I looked at material, basically, I could get it at four twenty-five, so I used a higher number. And I thought, that's, I mean, we gotta be fair.
Okay. So what was the price quote again?
It'd be sixty yards at four dollars and twenty-five cents a yard, or two hundred and fifty-five dollars, check to you. Or I can have material delivered to your, to the, basically to similar location where it was removed from.
Okay.
But the timing is not gonna be perfect, I'd say two to four weeks away.
Okay. I'd like to take time to think about this.
Fair enough. Could you get back to me within a week maybe?
I can come in next week.
Okay. You don't, in fact, in fact, you don't, if you, if you make a decision one way or the other, you can share with Lean ahead of time, I'll let you email Lean, call on the phone, and work out, you know, if you figure out in a day which way you want to go, that'd be great too.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't have to wait a whole week. If you say, let's say you want the check, we'll get a check early cut next week. They wait to Thursday, Friday, it's kinda tough to get the check in the system if you know what I'm saying. We have to.
I don't think the town, town's going anywhere.
No, 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 but the thing is, sometimes, but money's money, if you want money fast, it takes, it takes a good week to process it. Bob, do you have any comments to say?
No, no, I mean, it's, you're buying, bank run material is, and they just get it up and load it so you have a choice either one, you know, and that's, that's what I was saying, when you go to Pitt and you get material, you get raw material, you know, and so, it's one or the other, I guess. And it depends what is better for you. If you think you need to fill, you know, that might be a better option, so, you know, it's up to you to make up your mind and decide which way you want to go, Mike.
Okay, so we'll say, maybe by next week then, okay?
Yeah. You'll have my decision by next Thursday at the latest.
That sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You too. Just for the record, let me put it in the record that Dave returned to the board at this time. That was, I inserted that into the, to the minutes.
I realized I had to pull that out.
Yeah. That's all right, I know you forget about me 'cause I'm so close. Well, what was, what was noted last week, Dave was making, made a few comments from as a citizen, not as a member of the selectmen.
That probably wasn't clear.
But, so we made that, that's not one of the ways, one of the ways we corrected the minutes. Okay, next up, gentlemen, painting bids.
Kind of reviewed them pretty much.
Okay.
I'm gonna take this one, 'cause you have the one that needs to be signed, and I left mine on my desk.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, this one, I've read both of these.
Okay. Look at this. That one's easy.
Looks the old.
Yes, and yeah. So.
Okay, I've read them both, if you want to open up discussion about them.
Yep. Thoughts?
Do you want me to read a general description?
No, we, we basically got that, this is not, this is not.
We've got it, but the general public doesn't.
Just, alright, what we're bidding on, what we accept, I'll let you do that. For the public's purpose of what we're doing tonight, we're taking, we took some quotes, and we, this is our second week in discussing them. The quotes were for the building of the town garages.
And for the record, there was a few discrepancies between the quotes, and what we tried to do this week was review those quotes and get them as close to apples for apples as we could. Both companies we have quotes from are using a stain, and both are doing two quotes. Both companies appear to be doing scraping, sanding, and pressure washing. Both companies seem to be re-nailing the loose siding and/or screwing. And both are replacing a couple of pieces of rotted trim, and including the doors. I have the bid here from Tuttle, and it total is eighty-nine fifty. And it also includes the east side of the sand and salt shed, as well as the town highway department garage. And the applications are by spraying and back brushing on both.
And it's consistent with reliable coatings.
No total on reliable coatings?
Eight thousand four hundred eighty-one.
I didn't see any differences there. I'm in reviewing it. I didn't read any warranty differences, did you guys read into any warranties at all? Because it's a stain, is there no warranty on any of this?
I'm looking at it right now.
Let's see if that was.
Likewise here. I don't really see any area here. Bob, did you see any?
No, I've read both of them, didn't have it. There probably, there's probably an implied warranty as far as the product, but very highly unlikely either one of them. I find it hard to believe that you have to come back on stain, you know?
Okay.
It's absorbed in the wood, and it's, it's got, you've got a manufacturer's warranty on the stain itself.
That included that too. Okay, so they're apples to apples.
Well, we have one of the painters here, do we want to ask about the warranty at all?
I don't think it's fair because the other gentleman's not here, so. Well, the thing is, you could. Bob, what's your consensus?
Well, if it's not in the.
It wasn't.
If it's not in here, you know, you can't go and add it on after the fact and not have the other person.
Have an opportunity to respond to.
David, you talked about it being implied as, as far as how long the paint lasts or stain lasts.
Well, you're gonna have a manufacturer's warranty, which is gonna only cover the stain if there's something wrong. I'm sure they both, 'cause they're both painters, they both know, if you're buying a large quantity, you're mixing it anyways and it doesn't change much. Actually, it doesn't change much even if you don't, they're gonna tell you that much.
Any more comments?
Nope, I don't have any.
And do I have, do we have a decision, or can we come up with a decision, or consensus? I think we have to build on this.
Sure.
Maybe you want to make a motion, or you're leaning one way or the other?
Well, I think that on that building, we've got this as equal as it can be, and reliable coatings quote is a little bit lower. I did notice on this quote earlier this week that it was doing a little additional work, and I did ask our town administrator to call and make sure that he included in his quote so that they were apples and apples, so we can look at the total tonight. And it looks like, what is there, four hundred and something dollars savings to the.
Yes, a little bit, about a five hundred dollar difference. Four sixty-nine dollars.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go with the reliable coating bid for a total of eighty-four eighty-one, including exterior painting of the highway garage and the east side of the salt shed. And just to make a note here, I did say painting 'cause it's on his quote, but it is stated that he will be using stain.
You know, second.
Any further discussion on the quotes, gentlemen?
No, I think we've got them.
Yeah.
At the time. Very, very competitive bid, I want to thank the bidders that are here for putting that time into, into the building and bidding the building.
Harry, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So be it, it's done. Thank you for attending tonight. Yes, sir.
I just have one question. Was, was, was I ever going to do the east side of the salt sand shed as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The, Don, I did check the library building, and that plinth corner is taken care of now too. I appreciate you taking care of that for me.
And for the record, I'd just like to say thank you, I think as a gentleman, did you see the library, it's white tonight?
Didn't notice.
Thank you. Okay, it was a good thing, I appreciate what you did, you, without being told, you just went ahead and restored it to the, to the white. I just want to say thank you, from me to you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Don, just for an update from me, is that building complete there now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great, looks, looks good, great job, appreciate it.
We try, thank you, everybody's been really, I mean, everybody's been great to us, chief, everybody.
Yeah, we thank you for the good job, I'm sure our townspeople are gonna enjoy that building for years, so.
Actually, we heard comments election day, from people coming in saying, how great the building was.
And in fact, it was like, it was fabulous, some of the comments were, the quote-unquote fabulous appearance to it now.
That was this past Tuesday elections, you were the talk of the town. Or at least the building was.
As long as it wasn't negative.
After building out.
No, it was all good.
It was all good, and people had noticed, you know, that you had been painting, you know, some of the main, main homes in the, in the area too, so.
I just would like to say that everybody in this room, as well as Mary and everybody else, has treated us with respect and courtesy and professionalism, it's been outstanding.
Great. Well, we hope to keep working with you, we got a lot of buildings still around town, so.
And in fact, just FYI, we, we may have a painting, a smaller painting project at the transfer station. So that's, well, we just love paint this year. Okay, thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don.
I still got a question.
Yes, I have not forgotten you, sir.
The timeframe, when you can start?
We're gonna call, sir, tomorrow, and hopefully sooner than later. I'd like to have it just before the hurricane hits here.
Yeah, I didn't know if he had indicated.
He had, a couple of weeks ago.
On his first bid.
It was September, but I don't know if the weather's changed things.
The thing is, it's always weather dependent.
Well, no, I understand that, but I didn't, I was just wondering, 'cause he had put it in probably three weeks ago.
Yeah, and so he's still very interested in it, because he was responding to us this evening, so it was, we'll hopefully get that taken care of sooner than later.
Good, great, it'd be nice, and it's gonna be.
Pink.
No, it was kind of matching your existing colors.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, some kind of gray.
Yes.
Let you iron that out, okay?
No, it's, it's.
Yeah, whatever.
It's gonna be close to that, yeah, gray.
Okay, sounds good, that's great. What one you getting?
And while we have the road agent here before he leaves, I think is, I just want to point out, the town administrator shared with me gentlemen today, I think with you Dave too, there was some confusion regarding the way some of the, the company that Jeff hired was putting down asphalt, some patches here and there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and there were, there were some complaints about traffic that were kinda like related to the police department. So, the police department took it upon themselves to talk to the company and demand they get flaggers. And the flag, well, they get flaggers, and they couldn't get flaggers, so the police department went ahead and, and basically authorized a flagging detail.
No, he called them.
Right.
Oh, he called them?
Yeah.
Bill Jelinek called them.
Right.
To line somebody up.
Right. But the, but the, regardless of it, it's, the thing is, chief, I'm glad you're here too, but the thing is, I think we gotta be a little more cognizant and communicate a little bit better because it's, it's, I understand we pay top dollar for it.
Well, you, you, it's not exactly right.
Alright, well, help me out, help me out here.
We got a call, I don't remember what it was, when we were paving Montalona Road.
Okay.
Got a call, somebody complained about traffic.
Complaints were coming in.
So I went down there and I checked it out, it was about a thousand feet of open, you know, of lane that they were, that they had blocked up with equipment and paving and stuff. It was one guy flagged on one end and nobody on the other. So I grabbed the person in the vest, and I said, "Look, get somebody out there and flag, go get your equipment off the road." That's what I told him. I never told them that they had to hire flaggers, they had staff there, I just wanted to deal with the traffic problem.
Sure.
I had another one, another call when you were on Robert Rogers, Laura went to that. And then I get another call, or actually a walk-in, that came later on.
Okay.
And I'm down, I grab the person that they identified as a foreman, and I said, "Look, you have to have somebody flagging." I didn't tell me how to hire flaggers, I didn't tell them what to do.
Okay.
But somebody had to be flagging the traffic, 'cause you can't just have a closed lane of traffic with nobody doing any, any traffic.
Understood.
That's all, I never told them who to hire or anything else.
Then, alright.
I don't get any audience notice that any of this traffic, the paving's going on, I wouldn't have known it even happened if nobody called in.
Sure.
So, they called on the day before they did the great fine job, they asked for details, we filled it, that's it.
I, I guess, the issue was, I'm gonna make an analogy. When the town does, let's say, a building project, we get building permits at no cost. And the thing is, I'm not saying that we should have provided officers at no cost, absolutely not. But the thing is, it's like we're billing the town at top dollar when we, you know, for flaggers, which you didn't realize, realize who was behind the project, was it? But Jeff was, the town of Dunbar was behind the project.
Well, Grapevine Road, I'm sure, you know, pretty sure it was a town project, the one on Montalona, I had no idea it was pavement out there. In fact, I thought it might have been a driveway when I first head out.
But, but the issue, but the issue is that, could we have saved the town some dollars? If we even paid your guys overtime to call them in and work overtime rather than being on a flag detail? Because it's a flag detail, we have to pay for the vehicle, and what, what all it's doing is a shell game, because I'm taking it from the highway department.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, so, the bottom, I'm gonna distill it to the very essence of it. We've gotta learn to communicate and talk some more, and the thing is, when there's an issue come up, bring it up, Jeff's gonna be paving, maybe Jeff overlooked something, maybe the town administrator knew about it, maybe you should have brought it up some more. But the thing is, I don't, we had a lack of, a little small lack of communication, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody tonight. I'm pointing fingers at, we gotta just do a little bit better, so, the thing is, I'm not taking dollars out of the, out of the, the tight budgeted, road, road agents budget, and just to pay for top dollar for, for, for flaggers. And the thing is, and we have a contractor in the middle of it, so, I'm just gonna ask that we just communicate a little bit more, and that's how I'm gonna distill it, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. Okay, Lean, do you want to comment on this?
No, that's reasonable.
What I'm getting out of this is, you're accusing me of coercing the contractor to flag us, and that did not.
I did not say that, I said, I'm just asking for, I, I feel that if we had known it was a town project, I'm not, I'm not accusing anyone of anything. And I'm not pointing any fingers at, I said that again, I'm gonna say it again for the record, I'm not accusing anyone of anything. I'm just saying that we have to improve communications, so in case this comes up again, we can react in appropriate manner. Because I'm sure, if, I'm, I'm a hundred and ten percent sure, a hundred and ten percent sure, that if you knew that Jeff was in the middle of this, they were doing that for Dunbar, and you wouldn't have, you would have probably asked two guys to come in, or one guy to come in and help out and get it done, and be finished with it, I know you would have done that. But the thing is, you were, and from my hearing from you, you were just reacting to the request, and that was it. You treat it as any other request from any other town that you get requests from.
Now, that being said, on the other, I don't know my previous job, we, we, the police department provided details regularly for highway department, soaring water, engineering department, school department. And what, what they would do is, is, there were no fees or any things that were tacked on, and they didn't bill contractors. What they did is, they just, they tapped, they paid it from a line that was in each of those budgets. Now, this is the first time that I can remember that we have ever provided police services for the town for this type of job. This was something that was completely new.
And, and the thing is, and the things, and I realize that too.
And that's the way it probably should have, should be built in the future. It was something that, you know, nobody really had experienced.
And we are gonna continue to pave roads in this town. And the thing is, we may be in a situation, this happens again, and a little communication will solve the issue.
And I think it's gonna go a little, a step further, if we had known that it was a building department or a town job that these guys were hiring you for, maybe I wouldn't have had Joe Marie bill them.
Right.
But I didn't even know that, that you got their, her invoices, and it's like, where's the check attached to this? It was just confusing.
That, that's where, a little, a little communication would have gone a lot further. And so that's all I'm, I'm saying constructively, I'm not, again, not accusing, I'm not accusing anyone coercion, I'm not accusing of anyone of anything, except that, we communicate a little bit more, it's on the table, we can react to it. And the thing is, we're all adults, we can do it, we can make it better, right, better for the town, that's all I'm asking.
The owner of the company, Bill Jelinek.
Yeah.
Told, called me, or texted me, whatever, got ahold of me in the afternoon, the day before, said he couldn't get any flaggers, he was gonna call the police department. I said, "It's gonna cost you a lot of money." And he said, "Well, after the last fiasco," he said, "I'm gonna, that's what I'm doing." I said, "Well, whatever, just bill us, 'cause it's above and beyond what we normally do."
Can I ask a question of you? If you had had a part-time staff person, could you have used that person as a flagger?
No.
They're not trained for flagging. Because that would have saved the town.
But the thing is, this is not gonna be.
I mean, it was a last minute thing, and Dan's side too, and he, why would he not?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, he called the police station, and probably didn't talk to Dan. They, they talked to me, oh, I didn't know, yeah. But I mean, they, you know, it was, it was in the afternoon, wasn't it? Well, that's when he got one of them.
But the thing is, alright, I don't think, I, I think we beat this to death, I think we can put it behind us. And the thing is, I think is the, try to, we just gotta shoot for a little more communication, as best we can.
That's what.
Well, just, just so how I understand, how would you like to bill it, chief, other would? How would, how would you like to bill it out in the future?
Well, if it happens again in the future, which it may very well not. We're gonna try to avoid it at all costs, 'cause they don't have the manpower.
Right.
I mean, he's, he's said that before, in other instances, they don't have the manpower to cover the town the way they want to, so.
But if it does happen, how would you like to bill it in the future?
Cover the town and cover detail, the two different things. We cover towns with, with funds and scheduling that have been set forth in the budget. Details of people working off, you know, on their own time, off duty, and it doesn't take away from any coverage in the town. So.
So see, part of your town schedule. Yeah, but you would have had to call someone in, you had to call someone in regardless.
Well, we had two people that accepted the detail.
Yeah.
Just, just so we're all clear here, I think that if the chief couldn't cover the detail, that contractor could call into other.
Other towns.
We would have.
And we would have, and we would, or the chief would have.
If we couldn't have covered it, we would have called up the summer.
And they would, we would have been billed the same way.
Right.
Just so we're clear.
Oh, absolutely. But the thing is, it goes back to like, again, the police department is very kind in the sense that they don't bill extra for any town activity that we have, such as arson of the common when more police are involved. And just like the analogy would be, we don't, we have no cost, no building permits with no cost to the town. There are certain services we have to work towards, like, to save some dollars and not to destroy anyone's budget. That's all.
You know, usually, the contractors that do that kind of work ahead of time know where they're gonna be.
Yeah.
And schedule their flaggers, or they can get some of their people trained from the AGC or the ABC on a Saturday.
Getting flaggers this year isn't that easy.
They do it on a Saturday.
Yeah, but getting flaggers to service, and I'm sure Dan can, he is, that's, that's, 'cause he's, his guys do it all the time. They don't, they're just a lack of, and he's gonna move that direction to have in-house flaggers next season.
Okay.
Right, 'cause they do that training.
That's what he's run into continuously.
Other contractors have actually been thrown off the job down in some of the other towns that we've worked in, because the flaggers just left during the middle of the day.
Unreliable.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Alright.
This flagging deal is, is usually a company has the flaggers work for them, and they bill you inclusively, it covers all the costs. It's kinda like getting a detail, only they charge you up here, and they pay the guy doing the work down here.
Yes.
So there's no real incentive for this guy down here to come and do much flagging or be too responsible because he's on the low end of the spectrum.
Understood.
The whole thing. So, again, like I said, he's never run into a situation that's been this bad this year, so that's what he's gravitating to, but.
The whole thing, so again, like I said, he's never run into a situation that's been this bad this year, so that's what he's gravitating to, but. That doesn't help this year, but this year's over with for all intents and purposes.
Well, we still got a little bit of paving to do here.
Yeah, but I mean, that that's, it's incidental.
But that's mostly off-site too.
Yeah, incidental stuff.
Well, you know, that rare road's gonna need traffic detail.
Well, we just close it, we just close it, I mean, that's, that's the easiest thing.
No, I think it's trying to get a little humor too.
Long alone is a through road.
Absolutely, okay, gentlemen, thank you, alright, let's move on to the next item. Town financials, M S five thirty-five.
Okay, another piece of setting, getting closer to setting the tax rate, uh, the M S five thirty-five is the town's financials. Mike, you have the original.
Correct.
Cause I left mine on my desk, but I want the board to turn to page eight. And if you look at, uh, all these numbers have been entered based on the uh, financial audit that we just went through. Um, and these, uh, are, this form is completed by our auditor. Uh, the previous board before you decided to pay the auditor the small sum of a fee to make sure that the form was being completed. Properly, and that it would give an additional checks and balances, so that what is being completed on the form is being reported to the D R A. So on page eight, at the very bottom, under fund equity, you see uh, assigned fund balances. Hundred and eighty-five, five eighty-five, that number uh, includes any of our outstanding warrants that do not lapse. Which would includes uh, items like the um, Stark Bridge. Um, and some of the other warrants that have some time lapsing in that area. We have to report them on our financial, we recognize them as earmarked encumbered um, money. And then the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty-one dollars.
True unassigned.
Is a true unassigned fund balance, but when we go to set the tax rate, the D R A is gonna use that eight hundred and thirty-five, nine oh six. So of that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the board chose this past March to use a hundred and sixty-five of it. Of it, on our operating budget, so we're actually a little bit less than what you see there. Um, but I think we're still seeing uh, an increase of uh, fund balance. And I'm, and the auditor will speak on the whole financial statement along with the other. Uh, audit findings at our exit conference, that should be scheduled in the next few weeks.
Now Lean. Wouldn't a hundred and sixty-five have come out of the starting balance of four, four sixty-three?
We have um, from two thousand and, this is two thousand and seventeen audit. So we're starting, balance is two thousand sixteen ending, and ending two thousand seventeen. And in two thousand seventeen, there were numerous warrants that were added to that one oh seven, that was the beginning balance.
That's not really a question.
Three states question Dave.
The hundred and sixty-five thousand would have come out of the starting balance of four sixty-three.
No, no.
No?
No, it's coming out of, you, your budget was two thousand eighteen, we voted and prepared a two thousand eighteen budget. We were using and expending two thousand seventeen money. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So that's already reduced out of that hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars?
No, when we go to audit this calendar year, two thousand eighteen, he will reduce that six fifty by the hundred and sixty-five that we set at. And so the D R A will use some of that money, they'll be using the eight thirty-five, they'll use up a hundred and sixty-five of it. Which what you um.
Use to lower taxes this year.
Right, so instead of doing that tax rate setting, you did it in March. By the way, we wrote that warrant article, and that's where if you look at our um, two third. Six thirty-five that we had for the budget.
So why isn't that under committed fund balance or something to that effect?
Because we only voted on it this year, we only voted on it in two thousand eighteen. This is financials from two thousand seventeen, we're always a year behind on our financials. So town warrants.
We, I guess the question he's asking Lean, I'm gonna react, and help to reward it.
Yeah.
If uh, committed fund balance, would that be like, if we moved it over one year, another year, would one sixty-five show up in the line uh, twenty-four sixty?
No, because it's not a warrant, that's not lapsing, that one eighty-five encumbers all the other outstanding.
Not the one eighty-five, the one sixty-five, we were used to lower taxes.
It's gonna come out of the six fifty.
Okay.
Because we voted on it this year.
Right.
They're just telling us what we have at the end of December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
And where's that date, from the first page? Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty-first, twenty-fourth.
Okay.
But the, you'll, you'll, when I get the numbers for the tax rate setting, the D R A is going to use that eight hundred and thirty-five thousand.
And was there any committed fund balance used to reduce taxes in twenty seventeen?
Try and recall back.
Nope.
No.
No, I didn't think so.
No, I think, cause we had no, no surplus at all that year.
No.
Okay.
No, but we used some of that to replace.
Replenish it.
Replenish the surplus that we had to have on town.
Right, and this past year, we continued to replenish the surplus, but we split some, we returned some to the taxpayers, right?
Yeah, so there's two times that you can use a fund surplus, at tax rate setting or at um, town meeting.
We looked at a town meeting last year.
This year.
This year.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, because this is completed by the auditor, and the D R A is waiting for this form. I asked the auditor to upload their form, and I still have to, it's still required that the board sign an official. Finalized form, because as you can see on the ones you have there, it says draft. And the draft doesn't go away until I let the auditor upload it and save it, and then I can print the final version, and the board needs to sign it.
So three signatures across the top?
Correct, signature, print, and date.
No, na, print, position, and then date, and signature, it's the opposite.
And that is required to be uploaded to the portal as well.
So this is the twenty eighteen M S five thirty-five, but it is for the year of December thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
It's actually the two, two thousand seventeen five thirty-five. We, we just use this tool in the following year for financials. So for example, let's say we had a decrease in our revenue, Dave, then that would be adjusted at our tax rate setting.
Well, I'm just looking, it says twenty eighteen M S five thirty-five all over this. Every page.
Alright, you're right, so I guess they um.
So it's the twenty eighteen M S five thirty-five.
Using.
Being used to do the period ending December thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Cause we're always a year behind.
Right.
Correct.
So that's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you do me a favor Lean?
Yep.
Just so I can kinda follow this and get a, a perspective on it, can you give me the previous year one, just so I can go through the numbers?
Sure, and then um, the auditor will go over this form with us, when he comes in uh, for our exit conference.
So I'll keep this in my box.
You weren't, we, we, we here for the, you weren't here for that last year, it's.
It was.
Oh, you were, okay, that's right, but he comes in and talks over the numbers with us completely, and shows the shortcomings and all that kinda stuff, all the stuff.
Yep, I was here for it. So most likely in my file, I probably have last year's.
You probably do, cause you were here, yep.
Anything, I see the revenues went up, if you look at it, it's on the way up a little bit.
Correct.
The thing is, at the same time as the uh, our operating budget goes up, that, so the percentage, we to maintain a percentage, we should maintain the same. But keep feeding the air a percentage of uh, reserves to.
Right.
Complement what we spent.
And because we can't, we're coming in higher on our financials, the fact that we are picking up new tax revenue. That's an increase of our revenue as well, so we really don't have to do anything with this, but let it grow. And then we're still gonna see a decrease of the municipal side tax rate, because we have more new tax revenue.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Back to Lean, we're gonna go now to town business. Alright, gentlemen, Lean has got the uh, quotes on the signs, and uh. These are some of the signs we're making, and the first sign uh, was for about sixteen seventy-five, that's the big Dunbar sign.
Saw that yesterday.
Okay, and then, and then there was a request to put a sign similar to this one. In the very front of the building too.
Well, it's there, we're just replacing it, right?
No, this is on the front.
No, no, that, the li, that one's in the library, we're working on the library signs, so I got everything.
See the poster in the library?
No, I don't.
So we're replacing this sign, right?
Right, eh, are we putting one in the front of the building too?
No, we're not, but it does need to be repaired, cause Dave and I looked at it just yesterday, right?
Okay, so we're gonna have one in the front and one in the back, correct?
I hadn't quoted the one for the front, cause I didn't, was not aware it was in that poor shape, the one that they.
We can do that on a separate, on a, so let's do that on a whole separate.
But before we even go down the path, how critical is a sign to be made? Do we actually need this sign, which is erroneous?
I think it's uh, I think it's a huge thing to have that up there as you drive by. I mean, it designates that building, it's the same designation in that picture there.
How old is that picture, maybe five years?
But it shows that it's the Dunbar and Town Hall.
But it's, it's, it's not a town hall.
But this building is built as a town hall.
Town hall.
Okay, and this here, the library sign is under it showing the new youth.
Gotcha.
And I think from the road, I think that that's, that's huge.
I I I'm just asking, yeah, and that, I just wanna make sure that, Bob, am I off the deep end here, or? You you think we need this to sign to keep it historical, that's the question, is, does a sign make it historical, or is it just how?
Well, I know that, and and my driving's around to these different towns selling building materials. Almost every town has a historical town hall building, and they're all labeled with a nice sign in front, so.
Okay.
We have some public input too.
Go ahead Leo.
I think if you look at the uh, pictures of the town hall in the past.
You're right.
See the sign on the front of the town hall.
Okay, I I again, I I just.
Difference is that now we use ours for the libraries, and putting the library sign in the back.
Yeah, but the, the, the way it has, it had the town hall, then the library, the sign below it, library, so we have both signs up there.
Oh, it should be the library in the back, right, because that detracts from the town hall sign.
I'm kinda with Leo as far as that goes as well.
Underneath?
Yeah, the little sign underneath here, Lean, I think that, I think that this one in the back side.
Yeah, and you can, you can tell you where the library is, if somebody says, where's the library, it's in the town hall, one of the back.
So that's number.
It takes away from the, the town hall sign.
Right, that's the number three, and I, I'm in agreement with you on that, Mike, I think Leo's spot on there, I think because. The historic nature of this building is that it was a town hall.
Hall, and not elaborate percent, right, okay.
I have one more thing to bring up, the original's lettering was stencil that was created by volunteers.
Right.
He made a comment in his email that. The other signs that he, they made for the towns that are at their exits are um, New Time Roman, and they're solid. They're not with the stencil break, so he wanted to make sure that.
It'd be more, it'd be co, it'd be compliment.
And they, they are hand painted signs, they are not stickers.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
You have a.
Painted gra, painted graphics.
Town hall character to having that on the front, you know?
Oh, you know, nobody, we're talking about the font now.
Right.
Just the font, what do you think about the font versus?
This is the font they're proposing right here.
It's like a New Times Roman.
New Times Roman.
Yeah.
Which is what's on the rest of our town signs around, coming and entering into the town.
Yep.
Rather than having a breaks in the letters.
Alright.
Yeah.
And the one in the back, this would be, the number two would be the one in the back?
Yeah, that's the one in the back, on the building.
Correct, and the, the other one, we'd be, we're not doing this one properly.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Which is that one?
Which is this one here, that's a no-go.
So number three is no. And PVC painted.
I have no problems with the uh, with the materials, I think the materials are great, I think they'll probably be the last duration, the same colors, but they, it's gonna be lighter, and they won't rot like the wood did. It's gonna be aluminum. Aluminum.
A lot lighter too, he did say he was gonna give me a price to install, and I hadn't gotten it.
Okay, I, I, I.
Well, it's a, it's an aluminum frame with a three millimeter A C M face, sun face, so.
So it does have some plastic in it. Similar material, it could be.
So the frame is aluminum, so it's lighter than what we have there.
Significantly.
PVC moldings and trim, so he's gonna keep the moldings.
Right, so you won't have to paint that either, it won't rot.
And it is paintable too, so.
Yeah, right, it is paintable, I mean, it won't rot, it, man, chip won't peel.
So, I'll make a motion if you guys want.
Go ahead Dave.
To have Tom Sousa furnish sign number one, the two foot by twenty foot Dunbar and Town Hall sign. Furnish sign number two, which is a seven inch by thirty inch PVC sign for a hundred and sixty dollars. Sign number one was sixteen seventy-five for the record, and sign number four, which is a two foot by three foot. Dunbar and Public Library sign for seven thirty-five.
And that, okay.
And excluding sign number three.
How much was number two again?
Number two was one sixty, number four was seven thirty-five. And number one was sixteen seventy-five.
Which uh, the other one hangs up the post?
Yeah, the expensive one's the one off the post, yeah.
What's it made?
Material, does it, yeah, it does.
They made the one that's outside the cemetery there.
Hold, motion's on the table, let's hold, let's hold the discussion, motion's on the table.
Second.
Okay, now let's continue the discussion, um, it is a P V sign, custom shaped with full color printed graphics. Okay, now, that will replace the, the one in the back side, this one here, that exact sign will be replaced by.
Yeah.
Okay, then eventually we can get another one, if we wanna put one in the front.
Right.
Which would, would be similar cost, but on a separate quote.
Right.
Right, okay.
Sousa signs?
Sousa, Sousa signs.
Thank you.
So, did somebody second the motion?
Yes, we did. Any, here, any further discussion on this, Harry, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can I just?
One, one last thing, the font, keep it as it was, or just let them do the?
Times Roman is fine.
I think so too, rather than the breaks, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Bob, you wanna initial that too on the top? And Mike, good.
Oh, and the other thing too is, you've made the decision, I can go ahead and place the order, and then in the meantime, you can get me the quotes to install. And then you guys can decide on that next week, if that.
Yes.
Takes a little longer.
Maybe with the quote to install, Lean, you could look at that sign there, cause that's pretty well.
I was amazed, so the one that's in front of the cemetery is the one he did, and then he did one at the.
Time, times.
Town.
Town lines, one in Stark High Rise, south, and then over by. Towards Conker Way?
Lean, it doesn't, and the contract doesn't, uh, the proposal doesn't exactly spell out the um, the font.
I think it might have been another, another email.
Up by the size of the sign, Bob. The size of the sign, it's two foot tall.
The font.
You're talking about the font?
The font, yeah, let me read that on, on sign number one up on the top. Furnish one two foot by twenty foot.
It's in another email, he asked the question about the font.
Would that be the same font he's using on the other side?
Yeah, yeah.
Guess you could just.
Yeah, I would, I would, for that, then.
And that's why he pointed it out, he said that the ones that we did for us a couple of years back were the Times New Roman.
Yeah, but I'm making sure you understand Lean, that it's not the little signs of the font's gonna be.
Yeah.
Two feet tall.
Yeah, yeah, that's laser, I watched the special the other day, they can do a lot with laser painting, amazing.
Okay, moving on, so next week, Lean, the do-out, we need additional quote for the um, maybe for the additional one, for the additional sign.
Yeah.
And installation, put that on the same quote.
Do you want me to get him to work on the other sign for us?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a picture and send it to him. Installation and then new sign for town office.
Right, and just ask him, just generally, now that we have, he's got approved, uh, go ahead, what's the turnaround time, just so we know when it's gonna go in.
Okay.
It'd be nice to know. I don't want next year, I wanna soon.
Yeah, because we could have.
Yeah, but the thing is, he's, it's gonna be gone tomorrow, yeah.
What you got next?
I got a, a Mack truck update, just, uh, the, the new tarp system we approved was, uh, was installed. And, um, one thing he's trying to do is, um, uh, what he's coordinating with the, the rest mitigators, the painting company, and the, um, to try to work on the vehicle while he's on leave for vacation. And, uh, he's, he's gonna be gone for three weeks, and that would be an opportune time. At the same time, he's also multitasking and coordinating with the folks who are gonna do the, uh, the backup for the, uh, hauling for those three weeks. If the, three or four weeks while the truck is down, being, uh, painted. So, he's in close communication, should have a decision within the next, uh, I'd say eight working days. But the Mack truck, uh, is looking, uh, with the new, uh, cover on it, it's installed, news is great.
New tire system.
Yeah.
Is on.
Is on. And so, he's trying to coordinate that before he leaves on vacation.
And the old one will be sent to state auction.
And then Bob also pointed out to me, he also sent an email that the, uh, the white pickup truck passed inspection.
The town truck passed inspection, I was surprised he said that.
So, uh, that just adds more value to the truck as we try to sell it.
Another fifty, sixty dollars.
I was just gonna ask that question, Russ, where are we with that new truck?
The new truck, it's, uh, we're gonna, we're waiting for it to be built, it's gonna be a twenty nineteen.
Oh, it is ordered?
Yes. Um, we have a twenty nineteen version, that's gonna be delivered to us.
How can I have that?
Yes.
Think we might have ordered it the week after.
Oh, I didn't see, I didn't watch it all the evening, I didn't hear him talk.
No, in fact, um, just for the record, um, uh, he, he added an option that we took out of his budget, just he had heated mirrors sewed for the truck. And, uh, he's trying to negotiate a plow, uh, he was negotiating a plow prep package. And he's also, um, trying to watch his budget closely, so he can add a snow blade out of his budget later in this year.
And as you just said, um, with that new inspection, does it add value to that truck?
Yes, exactly.
We're just curious where we were with the move.
Oh, we're, he's, he's monitoring it closely, and so I have to say, uh, it's good.
It's kinda good it's gonna come later this year, it's almost like we got an extra year out of the front.
That seat, I don't know much, much left of that seat, have you seen the seat when you open the door?
Oh, yeah.
There's nothing left to it.
Here it's.
No, it's gone. Okay, and talking about the transfer station, I have a, uh, just FYI, this is his annual leave request, he's got a few la- holidays in here, and he's taken. And, uh, it was just put in for FYI. Okay, I have a tough one, gentlemen, we, we don't need a vote, but I need consensus. We have the old sign, a piece of wood, which, with the end is rotted off. We have someone who basically has requested that they would like to take the old sign from the town hall off our hands. I think we don't have to move it, or, I'd say, I have no problem with giving it away.
It's pretty heavy.
And, uh, I'll let you read the message.
There's a message as well.
That's your responsibility.
So, uh, I, I'm somewhat in favor of that, I have no, no qualms with that, because it's gonna go into the trash anyways.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't just put out a notice that it's available, you just throw it in garbage?
Well, I, what I was thinking is.
It is garbage.
One end of it is, but it could be updated for somebody.
It's all particle board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw, I've seen it, so.
You can't burn it.
Oh, no.
You're not supposed to burn it.
No, they probably wanna hang it.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
So, one person in the office did comment that it, it could have some value to it, we could sell it, but it's really, it's what, only ten years old, if that?
No, that was not my point, I know it's not valuable, but I'm just saying, one person, there might be five people that want it, so it wouldn't be fair to the other taxpayers who might want it.
Um.
We went through this with the firewood through the cemetery, trustees one year, they took trees down, and they gave it away to their friends.
I recall that.
Because I didn't need the wood, I said, if you're other people might want it.
But the question, rhetorical question I have, what value is, is this, uh, piece of beat up wood?
What value?
Well, you'd be, you'd be surprised if you had a little silent auction on it, might be.
Somebody might wanna hang it in their man cave or something, you know?
True, yeah, gentlemen, you wanna, you wanna put out for bid?
Yeah, just put a noise out that it's available if anybody wants it, and then.
Well, the thing is.
Only one person, then, okay, and if you get five, then you figure a way to give it, you know?
But it would have to be like a secret, a closed bid.
Right.
No, not a bid, just who's interested.
Well, I want the D then.
I'm not looking, I'm not suggesting that you sell it.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, but once we get five people coming in, determine a way.
At that point, now you decide how to do this, how to deal with it, you know, but if you only get one person, they can have.
But I think if we, if, if we're gonna offer it to more than one person, maybe we should say for, um.
A contribution to that.
Let's think about it a week and let her know next year.
Yeah, get your mind on the sound.
No, but.
Just post it out there that it's available.
Wait till next week.
It's not too heavy.
To take it away.
What's going in the trash?
If you get five people come in, say, I'd like the sign, say, we have five people interested, so now we have to decide who gets it. You're not trying to make money on it, you're just trying to.
No, I'm trying to expose it.
But I'm trying to close it in one, one.
At some point, it becomes so complicated, it's.
Well, it's not that complicated, you just posted it for a week.
Put it in the swap shop, let somebody pick it up, but then, but then we have to handle it, so.
No, I'm just saying, if you post it out there for a week.
Yeah.
Whoever misses that, their opportunity, that's their problem, but if two people.
So, the way I would have to word it then, it would be that we have the old town hall library sign.
Which is in disrepair, make, make sure people know it's in disrepair.
Look at it.
Um.
But I mean, you don't have to have this for a month long.
No, no.
To be fair, everybody has an opportunity for it, just because one person.
Things we have to sell, the thing is, if you have interest in it, submit your name, if we have three people, put the name in the hat, we'll pull that hat on the.
Okay, alright, alright, that, I think I like that idea, okay.
Just ask if anyone has any interest in the old sign to come and submit their name at the.
Submit your name.
At the giveaway.
Okay, that's perfect, yeah, yeah.
Give it away September twenty-second, whatever it is, that's, you know?
And the thing is, they get four, and put the name in the hat, we'll pour on out, and they'll, they'll be the lucky winner.
You're gonna always explain to this one that the fear thing to do is to make, see who's got interest, and then everybody goes in the hat, and someone gets it.
I'm gonna put my name in four times. I'm gonna put your name in.
I'm just kidding, yeah.
Well, I guess.
The thing is, whoever accepts it's gotta haul it away.
Hey, yeah, I can't see what you do with it, I'll put it in your, uh, your living, way over in your living room, but I'll put your name in four times too. Oh, no, wait a minute, you might ask me to help you.
So, it's gonna be kind of like a secret drawing, or?
Yes, in the hat.
Anyway, you might ask me to help yourself.
Does that, does that keep it simple, keeps it simple? Decision, decision will be next week of who gets it.
Okay.
That's fair, really.
That's perfect, secret drawing.
I'm not trying to make a job out of that, just.
No, 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 but I need to figure out how I was gonna do it without offending anybody or trying, yeah.
Okay.
You put it on the, on the bulletin board, whatever, whoever misses it, misses it, that's their fault.
Alright, behind us now, we got a plan. Alright, uh, we have a public hearing on our health trust. And, uh, we can, we're, we're eligible to participate, does anyone on the board have an interest of going, representing Dunbarton, I have a public hearing notice?
It went last time, you really don't, you're just listening, cause there's not much input.
Right.
They're gonna give us our rates anyway, so I say if there's no input, we don't really need to go to work.
Agreed, just for the record, uh, just remember that I'll be going to the municipal association tomorrow morning.
Oh, okay.
Representing Dunbarton.
Good. Well, have a nice day.
I know, I'm gonna try to. Okay, uh, we, we still need, Lena, we don't have a second bid on the siding issue for the town safety center. Okay. Um, the garden club, uh, which is a, uh, not a, a town funded activity, is asked if they could, um, uh, put a top, uh, thing on Hot Topics. Uh, that's our website. I need, do we have any feelings one way or the other on this?
I don't have any problem with letting them use Hot Topics.
I don't either, cause you have other organizations that have stuff up.
I mean, it's, Hot Topics is there to let the community know some things going on, and I don't see that, okay, any issue with that.
The thing is, uh, I have, it looks like it's, uh, they're, they're canceling the mom sale this year for their, their fundraiser, but I think that's the only thing they wanna put out, so I think it's a consensus is let it be posted.
Oh, I thought I saw signs up that they were selling.
I'd point you to that.
Oh.
You don't have to put sides.
That's too bad, oh, that's too bad.
Public wants the topic.
It's only a sign up.
Cancelled, it is cancelled.
Yes.
They already had the signs marked purchase, it was cut in the middle.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The cost would be enough for them.
Okay, yeah, I'll put it up for her.
I gotta read this, Lena, I have the information on the, um.
Hey, Dave, that's our sign, yes?
Yeah, he does, I guess. Oh, it's not stamped.
Bob, I need you to read this, and, um, uh, this is about the Kelsey Road turnaround, I have not read it, so I'm not gonna bring it up for discussion tonight, until next week, yep.
You wanna sign that, hand it over to Lena?
No, but I'll do it anyways.
For Hot Topics.
Okay. Continuing on. Town business, I have, uh, remember last week, we talked about, um, other projects which we may wanna be tackling this week, before they, at least identifying, that we wanna tackle before the end of the year.
Can I ask for clarification on one, you made a motion on a painting bid?
Yes.
You used the old quote, and he actually included an additional, that east side of the salt shed.
I said that, if you read that.
You did?
Yep, you read it back, and I used the new number.
Yeah, he used the eighty-four or something.
Where was I?
I don't know.
Okay.
He was correct.
I just wanna make sure that it's, it's including the.
I wrote the numbers down to be sure.
Beautiful, alright.
I don't want Dave messing up this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, um, so while we're clearing up things, did I hear in an email that Woody possibly has two quotes on the face of his building?
I didn't read that, he was emailing the four of us.
I kinda read that, um.
Okay.
Quickly that he possibly has two, he's gonna hopefully present them tonight.
What is this one, did he include it in part of another one?
No, I don't believe so, I would've, I think I would've said.
Well, I didn't check my email before I left, so.
So, I think is, this is for the, for the paint, for the staining?
I think so, for the face of his building there, and, uh, just.
Currently have one proposal and hope to have a second one today on the painting, it wasn't here, uh, so he does not have the second one yet, but he's working on it.
Okay. Um, but that's one thing you wanted to get done down there, that you identified.
Yeah, and the other item, the other ones are in the meeting minutes.
Yep.
The police department safety complex siding.
Well, that's still, that's still, what's something we wanna get done this year.
And then the face of Woody's.
Do you have the, the paint on the, everywhere there?
You know, we don't, on the backside, you mean?
No, on both, on the front side too.
The paint's peeling, just a small section, just like.
Yeah, we don't, but that's a good idea, and we did have some discussion about that deck going out the back.
Have you seen the deck?
It's awful, it's, the paint is really coming off.
Yeah, I, I, in, in integrity wise, I think Larry looked at it a few years ago, when it's, it's solid, it just looks terrible.
Right.
I might, would a pressure wash it, take care of it?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
Maybe just. We wanna use the material from the sign to reinforce that, uh.
We have to fight the public for that.
So, yeah, we'll look at both entryways while we're out there too, I'm not sure we fit it all in this year, but we'll give it a try.
Okay, so the next, the next, what we wanna get the coolest on would be, uh, the siding for sure, and that's gonna be, we know, we saw how much that was, it's, it's a different amount, I don't wanna say the, the numbers yet.
So, that's the, what we have existing right now, is today, the twenty, fifty-one to twenty-five.
Right.
Less this last bolt that you just approved.
Right, and the signs?
And the signs would be another couple of ways.
Couple thousand, yep, we have basically forty left. Uh, then we have to do the siding, we have, gonna do the painting down at the transfer. I think the small painting project, um, would be appropriate for the, uh, for your ceiling on the entryway and the back porch, and the back entryway.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about the front, the back, I think if we just pressure wash that, as long as it's structurally safe, that, that's good enough for me, if you guys wanna paint it, that's one of the.
Well, I think that would be, that would be, it's, once you're standing. Standing?
Probably a better thing to, to take care of it, cause that seals the wood.
Staining.
Whichever one you wanna do, but.
Whatever you wanna do is fine.
Yeah.
It's the front that I'm concerned with, that's really what we see, I've tried for years to keep the corners off of it.
And the, uh, and the, the balance, Mike, after we take care of those projects, I think we should, um, try and designate to try and hopefully, I did talk with Jeff Trexler, when he came in to vote, I pulled him aside, and he said, this next coming month early, he should have time to look at that, and so, I'd like to leave a little balance there, that hopefully we can get some of that installed up there.
Even if we have to encumber, even if they don't get it done, we can possibly encumber that money for that project.
If we have a contract, we can.
So, I'd like to see what we can do to wrap up with the balance of that.
I think that's a probably a prudent move.
I think that's all the projects we spoke about anyway.
Yeah, but that's been an albatross around right now for a long time.
Do you want me to try to get the quotes that Woody's getting to add the painting at the?
That would be, yeah.
Would it make sense, if it's a small enough job, that we can include that additional?
Chief, would you be available to have Woody contact you, so we can bring the painter over, and you can show him?
Sure, you, you don't.
It's all on site, yeah.
And when they do those quotes over there, can we separate the, the entry to that?
Yeah, that, that.
And then the exit in the back? So, separate those two, in case we, in case we wanna do one or the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause one, the back one's gonna be a pretty substantial painting, and on that back one, I, I'm kinda with Mike, I think we should do a stain of some sort, cause it gets a lot of.
I don't have a problem, but the thing is, to leave raw wood, you know, it leads to problems.
And it was treated wood in the past too, so. Yeah.
Like a semi transparent oil, that would be great.
Alright, I'm trying to get the name from Woody, so I can call them.
Leo, did you want to add some value, value here?
Keep offering you guys, but, uh, you're talking about spending, you know, on projects?
Yes.
You have another project, you haven't discussed it all, I brought it up multiple times this year, and I don't know, maybe you've got another plan for that, but the town pound?
We do have a plan for that, you obviously over, you missed, you missed, missed out on it.
We're gonna use the hogrees later, when it gets cooler in the fall, to go in and clean that up, and Dan Velco.
How do you say his last name?
Said he would work on the trimming of that bush on that same timeframe there, and provide some tractor work for us, so.
Hogrees are here, so they're.
I'm gonna rally them up.
So, they're capable.
Well, capable.
What we may have to coordinate ahead of time is maybe have a town truck there, so we can haul off the debris we take out of there. Or chipper, yeah.
So, we did last one.
We're gonna hold them to the fire, Leo, they're capable.
No, I did, I didn't, when you said you get the hogrees, I know that your son, I didn't.
No, my, uh, two of my nephews.
Oh, your nephews, okay, so I thought maybe they're capable, cause otherwise, you know, some people might not be capable to do all that. I just driving by this, this afternoon, coming up here actually, I noticed on, if you're looking at it on the left-hand side, it's really getting grown in here.
I'm, I'm probably gonna oversee them, so I wanna let the bees get into a little bit of a cooler state too, because right now, they're pretty active everywhere.
It was, it was, it was definitely discussed earlier, just probably when you left, but we had a, delineated a plan of attack.
You think there's bees in there?
Oh, yeah.
In the stone walls, surely. Cause there hasn't been any use of that, and nobody's.
He's scared.
Well.
I'm allergic.
Chief was looking, chief was, I'm gonna say, chief was looking for a place to put the dogs, and I said, we, he wanted to take them to the pound, I mean, the real pound, and I said, why can't we use?
Can't use it yet.
No.
There's town resources, you know?
Saved dollars, right?
What happens when it doesn't stop barking?
Hogrees will have to man that, we'll update that hogrees next year.
There we go. All right, moving on, so, uh, uh, we just need a few more quotes, and, uh, so basically, painting quotes.
Yeah.
And siding.
Yeah.
And Jeff needs to, uh, move out of that.
Yeah, and again, that'll be the cooler time of year, I think as Bob has stated before, you know, the summer would be a terrible summer to have done that metalwork up there.
If we go.
It'd have been a hundred and thirty degrees.
Right, well, metal or wood, it's whatever.
Same temperature.
You got, you got things halfway, right, you got a load of steel, it's up there now, that they'll have to lower down, or you got the other half on the bottom that they have to pull up.
After they re-manufacture it.
Yeah.
So it's like.
But the ones that's down is the ones that have to be remanufactured.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna take it for public comment. I think so too, thank you. Chief? You're welcome, you're welcome for it.
You better make a spot in the new house.
Gonna use it for one of the walls, it's gonna be an archway right over the driveway. I'll put a welcome to above it.
You know what's neat, you could cut off, uh, the town hall, just have Dunbar on there, it'd be a nice sign.
Which is hall.
There you go. All right, we're, we're, basically, we're not gonna sell it off by pieces, it's, it's all or none.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Leo.
No, 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 they're denied. We're not done yet, we're still in public comment, thank you, chief, now bring it back to the board, I'm, now, Dave, you, it's back to the board.
Make a motion to adjourn.
You're, you're overruled. Bob, you have anything for the public, for me, for us?
I could say something that would go with his, but I'll wait, no, I have nothing.
Okay.
You know, just in case, Lean, or you have something to say.
Understood.
But you must be almost exhausted anyways.
Yeah, I know, I'm good. Lean, do you have anything for the group?
I just wanna let the board know that I attended a health trust seminar today, very informative. Um, one thing that I was not able to, um, establish for the town is a health wellness coordinator for the town, and by doing that, it puts us, uh, gives us some, uh, funding resources to either have a health, uh, informational, uh, class for all the, um, full timers, and they actually will support and pay for like a luncheon or something, so I'll be working with the, he doesn't know yet, but I'll be working with the police department and the fire department, see if they're interested in scheduling a health wellness, um, class with their departments on their time, and then it could be funded with, uh, the funds from the wellness, uh, program to provide a meal, and then maybe get a good turnout, and just educate our employees on what our health, um, trust benefits, uh, do, will truly do for them, if they understand the whole process. I thought it was very, very informational, and I'm, I'm looking forward to maybe sharing that with some of our other departments.
Can I queue away for a comment?
No, since you were brought, you were mentioned, you can comment.
Okay, it's not about that though, I just wanted to let you know, Jason Patton cast his last, uh, evaluation, uh, in Arizona.
Excellent.
And, uh, he's gonna be getting certificate to the drug repetition.
No issues with expenses?
No, it, it is a, uh, a federal estate grant that's covering.
No, I'm talking, is, the, the.
No, everything's on smooth, smart enough.
Okay, good.
So I just wanna let you know about that.
Thank you.
And I have one more thing.
Go.
Um, the Hammond property transferred today, so it's now in the new owner's name.
Okay.
If anyone's interested.
Yeah, I heard that the other day at, uh, the elections, actually.
Yeah, they closed, it was recorded, it was recorded today.
Okay. Do we wanna send a letter from the select board, uh, in reference to that land, and let them know that, you know, we know that they probably heard that we had some interest, and if they have anything coming up, we'd love to discuss it with them?
Uh, that, actually, there's some.
Oh, the new buyers, you mean, the new owners?
Yeah, there's some details there, they're taking two years to pay, it's taking two years to pay them off, cuz that's what they wanted.
I'm not talking about a formal letter, Bob, I'm just telling, like, initiate something so that in two years, they would come back to a board. Might not be this board, but just something that, you know, we understand that they purchased the property, and the town has, you know, some interest in that property.
We can, but I, I even talked to one of the principals on Tuesday, can, I congratulate them, you know, Ken Gerber, probably. And, uh, you know, and that's what he said, they're gonna take a couple of years, he knows that we're interested, and he also knows that Conservation Commission's interested in that piece by Guinea Road. But right now, they're gonna settle with over two years' time to paying the Hammonds, cuz that's how they want their money distributed, and it's a tax thing, but it wouldn't hurt if you wanted to meet with them.
Yeah, I don't even think meet with them, just send them a letter saying that, you know, anytime they're ready to sit down, we understand that they purchased the property, and just kinda leave the door open.
You wanna draft something, Lean, start off with saying congratulations on your new purchase?
I could probably.
Maybe draft something, we can review it or take.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. And, and maybe reach out to the Conservation Commission, see if they wanna be part of the letter.
I'll draft something and send it to the board for review.
Now, Dave, your motion. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third. So, so be it.
Uh, can we go to the non-public now?
It's too late, meeting's adjourned.
I didn't wanna save this on the record, Linda Van Bogart's property transferred also.
Did? To her son?
No, a, a company in, in Goffstown.
Then the Bogart by Kimball Pond?
Nelson's, Nelson's.